To order. Hello? Can't hear you. Hello?
You're the last one.
Hello? Board meeting is being called to order.
Yes, please.
Take your seats, please.
I get here when traffic meets me here.
My mic doesn't seem to be working. Is it working now? Thank you.
Usually works.
All right. They're all coming.
Sorry.
No problem. The Board of Trustees for Pasadena Area Community College, please come to order. Ms. Thompson, please call the row. Brown, here. Dwap.
Here.
Dr. Mann. Dr. Fellow.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Dr. Selvage.
Here.
Mr. Thompson. Ms. Ba.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So, tonight is a very exciting night because we have several things that we'll be doing. And we will begin by having our pledge of allegiance. And I will ask Ms. Wap.
Ms. Mann. Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Wap. So, as I was saying, tonight is a very special night for Pasadena Area Community College. We will have our... We will have this meeting in three different sections. Our first one will be, we will do our officially sworn in, our two new members and our returning members. So, we will do the pledge of al... We will, at this time, ask them, I think we'll go over there, and we will give them the oath of office. So, could you join me? And then, we will have the other part, too. Right over there.
See, this is John Martin's tenth time.
We have the proclamation.
This will be his twenty-year term.
I remember when I ran for office, it was like, "Whew, so much work." But now, it's over. Whew, I can breathe. So, come closer, so I could see you. I know John did not have to run, but I know these two young men worked very hard. So, at this time, I will officially render the oath of office. And I would like you to repeat after me and insert your name. I...
I.
Jim Ostrab.
John Martin.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
And I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
Of Cal... Of... The United States of California...
Of California.
Against all enemies. You should have been having your hands up, sorry.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will... And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I will...
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. We will have some time, and that's a little bit for you to address. I know you have many loved ones here. Maybe take a few minutes and thank them for coming. Go ahead.
I didn't have a speech prepared, but I know my wife and my boss is out there somewhere, Scarlett. Thank you for coming. And there's other supporters of my campaign that are here, including Sierra City... City of Sierra Madre Councilperson, Rachel Arizmendi. Thank you for coming. And an important part of the campaign, Martin Truitt, along with his two children. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you very much. It's a tremendous honor, and I want to thank especially my wife and all those in the community and at PCC who've supported me here, and I look forward to challenging and interesting service. I should say that I'm wearing a intertwined flag of California and the United States, which was given to me by my son and his new wife from New York. And they... I'm proud to be wearing that. And I'm also be proud to be wearing a PT-109 tie clip that my father was given when he worked for President Kennedy. Dad passed away a year ago at the age of 94, so I'm proud to have these little trinkets with me on this great occasion. Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Well, I'm grateful to serve again, and I'm grateful to all those who chose not to run against me.
So, this is a very bitter, sweet moment because we have new board members coming and we have some very dear ones leaving. I had the opportunity to work with Bill Thompson and Dr. Mann for the last five years, and I have become very fond of them. When I think of Bill, I think of someone that's always giving you advice. When I first became a board member, he was one of my... One that really stood out for me and made me feel very comfortable under the board because he will call me every board meeting and, "Are you okay? Do you under... Do you need this?" He was a mentor without someone... Without ever asking, he assumed that word... Work. And I want you to know publicly that I appreciate you for that. Now, Dr. Mann, she taught me a lot of things just by watching her. She is full of knowledge. She has history galore. You know, anything you wanted to know, you could go to Dr. Mann. And one... And one thing I learned about her is her love for students. Everything she did, she did it for students. So, I want you to know that I appreciated all what you rendered to us while we were here on the board, and we definitely will miss both of you. I have some proclamations here. I would like Dr. Bill to come up, and I will read the proclamation that we have as a recognition from the Pasadena Board of Trustees. Whereas William E. Thompson has served the Pasadena Area Community College District as an Area Four Trustee for eight years. And whereas Mr. Thompson is recognized... Is a recognized civic leader, having held office as Mayor of Pasadena and longtime Mayor... Member of the Pasadena City Council. And whereas Mr. Thompson has demonstrated his commitment to his community by volunteering as the Chair and a member of the Rose Bowl Operating Company and the Rose Bowl Aquatic Center. And whereas Mr. Thompson led Pasadena's successful effort to secure major events for the Rose Bowl, including two Super Bowls, a World Cup Final, and the 1984 Olympics. And whereas Mr. Thompson has distinguished himself as an intellectual property litigation attorney, representing major clients in jury and court trials and before the International Trade Commission. And whereas Mr. Thompson earned respect throughout California for his leadership on regional transportation and other issues as President of the League of California City, Los Angeles County Division. And whereas Mr. Thompson's dedication to PCC was exemplified in his service as co-chair of PCC celebrates student success gala, which raised more than $1 million in students, scholars. And whereas Mr. Thompson's colleagues at Pasadena City College deeply appreciate his wise counsel and even handed guidance throughout leadership and a yielding commitment to the students, faculty, and staff of our college. Nor... Now, therefore, I, Rajan Verdin, Ph.D., Superintendent, President of Pasadena City College, and I, Belinda Brown, President of the Pasadena Area Community College District, Board of Trustees, proclaim our college's appreciation for William E. Thompson.
Thank you very, very much. I am very appreciative of that. I want to not make a huge mistake and leave you this evening without thanking my wife, Carol, for... And my family, but particularly Carol, for her support, her love. And it's... I could not have done what I've done for PCC or the community without her support. So, thank you very, very much. I very appreciate that. I also want to thank the Board of Trustees, with whom I've had the pleasure of serving over the past eight years here. I became a trustee at PCC eight years ago because of my passion for public education and its critical role for our future. I especially wanted to reach out to local students to attract more to attend PCC. I'm pleased and proud of the work we've accomplished, in spite of what you may have been told or heard. PCC really is an outstanding college, an excellent place to get a terrific education. We're number one in the entire state of 113 community colleges for awarding associate degrees and for awarding associate degrees to minority students. I'm especially proud of the efforts we've made to reach out to local students through our pathways and dual enrollment programs to make it easier and more appealing to attend PCC. And next spring, PCC will offer PCC courses at John Muir High School in Pasadena. As Belinda said, my wife Carol and I had the honor of chairing the first-ever fundraising gala at PCC this May. The event took about eighteen months from beginning to end to plan and make it happen. More than 500 people came to the campus here to attend that event, and we raised, as was said, $1.1 million for scholarships for PCC students. So, we at PCC have very much to be proud of. And so, as I move on to my other endeavors and opportunities, I leave my very best wishes for this college and the terrific staff, faculty, students, and administration. You deserve the very best, and I sincerely hope and pray that that is precisely what you receive. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Bill. Goodness. Thank you. Alex.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. Next proclamation goes to Dr. Jeanette Mann. If she would please come up in recognition of her service to the Pasadena Area Community College. Whereas Dr. Jeanette Mann has served the Pasadena Area Community College District as an Area Two Trustee for 32 years. And whereas Dr. Mann, as the first woman elected to Pasadena City College Board of Trustees, is the champion for equality. And whereas Dr. Mann has distinguished herself as a leader throughout the California Community College System, having served as President of the California Community College Trustees' Board and the Community College League of California. And whereas Dr. Mann has been recognized for her enduring dedication and service with the California Community College Trustee, fulfilling the trust award. And whereas Dr. Mann is a regional stalwart, having received the Pasadena NWACP's Community Award and a Woman of the Year Award for the 21st State Senate District. And whereas Dr. Mann's trailblazing spirit was most recently honored by a Breaking of the Glass Ceiling Award from the California Chapter of the National Women's Political Caucus. And whereas Dr. Mann is an accomplished scholar, earning her doctorate in English from the University of Missouri Columbia, which subsequently bestowed upon her a distinguished alumni award. And whereas Dr. Mann's colleagues at Pasadena City College have great respect for her clear-hearted perspective throughout thorough analysis and unending commitment to the education of our region's students. And whereas Dr. Mann's dedication to educational empowerment shall live... Live on through the establishment of Dr. Jeanette Mann Student Support Resource Center. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Rajan Verdin, Ph.D., Superintendent, President of Pasadena City College, and I, Belinda Brown, President of the Pasadena Area Community College District Board of Trustees, proclaim our college's appreciation for Dr. Mann. Thank you. You need to say "me." Yes, I am. You know, what is going on here? Or you got to...
What? Oh, you have a couple more.
Oh, look, first this out. Do your thing. No, no, go ahead. Go ahead. If you've got a couple more, do your thing. Okay. Let us all do our thing here. Okay. So, we have a plaque. A plaque for Dr. Mann reads, "In honor of Dr. Jeanette Mann, trustee and lifelong friend of Pasadena City College. In recognition of the establishment of the Jeanette Mann Student Support Resource Center and in gratitude for her dedication to the well-being of every PCC student presented this ninth day of December 2015 by the staff and administration of Pasadena City College, Dr. Rajan Verdin, Superintendent." Thank you.
Did this for you? Did this on the ground, or coming up the center?
Oh, thank you so much.
And then, we have a scholarship also.
I don't have it.
Bobby.
So, we have a scholarship as well. Please come up. I didn't mind. I didn't mind, really. I didn't know you were going to do anything. I had heard about the scholarship, because I guess I wanted to know.
To Dr. Mann, as a surprise to you, we also want to name the very first Jeanette Mann Scholarship, and we have the student who is receiving your scholarship with us tonight.
Teresa, do you want to introduce?
Actually, you want to do it, Nikki? It's with great privilege that both Teresa and I are able to introduce Anisa Rivas. She is an EOPNS and STAR student. Anisa is... Truly embodies the stars that we have in our program. She's done an outstanding job in light of a number of obstacles that she has received. This was a competitive process that both Teresa and I decided to do. We really wanted to open this up to all eligible current and former foster youth that we're working with, and due to the application that she presented, she was selected. She is planning on going to college in the fall and has already been accepted to Humboldt University for Fall 2016. And as an EOPNS student, we've worked with her for a number of years, and it's so great to see her evolve and blossom into this young woman. So, we're so proud of you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Want to say quick... Want to say thank you?
To the Board of Trustees and the Stars in the EOP program, I just want to thank everybody who's here, and especially being in your honor. I think that's really amazing, and it's an honor for me as well. But like Nikki said, the obstacles have been hard, not only as a student, but you know, just overcoming personal things. And so, the fact that, you know, I've almost given up so many times, and Pasadena City College has been like my number-one home. Like, I live here, like, you know? So, I just want to thank everybody because it's really an honor. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah. So, yeah, let's... So, happy birthday, Teresa. Teresa, come on.
We're going to do that, the two of you first.
The two of you first.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, unlike Mr. Thompson, I didn't prepare any remarks, which is always dangerous. But... So, I'm not going to talk on and on and on because I... I know what I wanted to say, but I did not know I was going to get this honor. And I'm literally just overwhelmed. When... I told Dr. Miller last year, when he was interim president, you know, "I'm not going to run, and I don't want $1,000 to get a life membership in the Association of Community College Trustees, and I don't want this. If you want to do anything, give a scholarship to a foster youth in my name." So, I really, really appreciate it, and I'm really blown away with the Student Center's source. And I do have a few people... I do few remarks I would like to make, and just kind of acknowledging the people who've been so important to me during my career. First of all, Sue Mealy... Suzanne Mealy, would you please stand up? It's here in the audience. Sue and I were, as I indicated, the first women elected to the PCC Board 32 years ago. I was elected first, and Sue tied and had to run... Had to run again. And we served together on the Board for 24 years. She's a dear colleague. We had a very, I would say, challenging time with the five men, one of whom's still here. We kind of approached things a little differently. I remember how surprised they looked when we said, "Maybe we should have a retreat." Well, what's a retreat? We went to conferences together, and I'm very, very pleased that she's here tonight. The other persons I want to acknowledge are Diane Vilebozian and Tom Seifert. Diane has been my treasurer every time I've run for office, and I ran not only for the Board, but I ran once for the Assembly. They have always, always been there for me. They've been my major support. And as Tom Seifert just reminded me, he walked me down the aisle at my daughter's wedding. So, you can't do much more than that. Two other people I'd like to recognize, one who isn't here, our dear colleague Walter Shatford. When I was first elected to the Board, Mr. Shatford, those of you who know him can imagine this, told me he wanted to give me an orientation in my home, but he'd only come if my husband were present. And so, my husband was a scientist at JPL, and he worked every evening. And I said, "Look, you've got to be here for this because, Mr. Shatford, I won't be oriented unless you come." So, we came, and I learned one thing, and the most important thing, on all my years on the Board. Mr. Shatford told me, "If you really want to get anything done, you've got to learn to count to four." And so, that's my advice to the new trustees. And then, the last person I'd like to acknowledge is my dear friend, John Martin. And I'm going to cry. When we were first elected, no people on earth could have been further apart in their orientation to life and in their views of things. But over the years, I've come to understand John and to love him and his beautiful wife, Janet. He is a good person. He is deeply committed to the students at PCC, and I really, really enjoyed serving with him. And the last thing, and that's where I may cry, and then I'm going to shut up, is when my husband was critically ill, there was a support group that he... His doctor wanted him to go to, but it met on the same night as the board meeting. And so, I brought this to the Board's attention, and I said, "But you know, we're going to have... Could we change the board meeting?" And John Martin was the person who made the motion to move it from Thursday to Wednesday, and I'll never forget that. Thank you, John.
Congratulations, Jeanette.
So, what we're going to do at this time is take a recess for 15 minutes so you can mingle with your guests and take pictures and do what have you. And I want to thank all who came out. This is a great time for us, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
President Brown, can I just say, while they're still here?
Okay.
Can I just say one or two quick things? First to Bill. I can't see you. You can't see me. It's probably a blessing, Bill. Don't... I want to thank you for the dignity, the decorum, and the class that you brought to this Board. In my district, trying to explain what the Board of Trustees does at Pasadena City College is very, very difficult. And so, when I tried to explain that, you know, it wasn't a bridge club, and it wasn't just, you know, guys getting together in a garage, I would say, "But there's some really great people on this Board. There's some very distinguished people on this Board, like Bill Thompson." So, I want to thank you for that level of decorum and how you've represented this college during these last eight years. I just personally thank you for that. You really did give us a lot of class. I'm going to try to really be short on Jeanette and not tear up like Jeanette. So, sometimes there are thoughts that go through your mind that are best not expressed, and I'm going to risk expressing them. But when Jeanette and Sue first got elected, there was this thought that went through my mind, and it was, "Oh, boy. Now, what are we going to do?" And I got to tell you, when... Ever since Jeanette talked to me and said she wasn't running, I've had this thought running through my mind. "Oh, boy. Now, what are we going to do?" As she expressed it, I think, better than I can. Obviously, we've grown to be very, very close, personal friends. I so trust every comment and thought she ever makes and expresses because I know it has always come from the center of what is best for this college and what is best for students. When she was running for the Assembly, most people would take any public forum as an opportunity to position things or to position comments to kind of better themselves in the upcoming election, and Jeanette never did that. It was straight and narrow, PCC, what's best for PCC? What's best for the students of this district? She is in a very elite group in my mind of people that I've seen on this Board, Walter Shatford being one of them, and she's right there with them, who... People will never understand the depth of their sincerity and how they've been there, talking to so many different people in so many circumstances, being that kind of a leader, representing this college, caring for students, and bringing that consistency and that history and that depth. So, Jeanette, I'm going to give you the highest compliment I can give anyone. You are in a class with Walter Shatford. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Just a minute. I have to come. [laughter][1694.12]
Shatford being one of them, and she's right there with him, who, people will never understand the depth of their sincerity and how they've been there, talking to so many different people in so many circumstances, being that kind of a leader, representing this college, caring for students, and bringing that consistency and that history and that depth. So, Jeanette, I'm going to give you the highest compliment I can give anyone, you are in a class with Walter Shatford. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That is the greatest compliment, and now I expect you to go take his name off the library and put mine up there.
If we can't do that, maybe we can replace Horace with Jeanette.
Okay, so at this time, we are going to take a recess for 15 minutes. We will return, we will reconvene at. We are going to resume. We are going to reconvene our meeting. Now. Thank you. Everybody back? Who's missing? John?
John, he's right there.
Valerie?
No, no, it's not her fault.
We are going to reconvene, so we could go to closed session.
He was going for a chair, and I intervened.
Okay, so at this time, I am going to read. Before we adjourn to closed session, I would like to read the agenda, and then see if we have anyone that has any question. So, for a closed session item, we have three items, as I can see. The first one is Government Code 54957.6, Negotiation with Unrepresentative Employees, Confidential Management Association. Lead Negotiator, Dr. Robert B. Bell. Amel, why do I want to call him Bell? Sorry about that. Dr. Robert B. Miller, Assistant Superintendent. The second item is Government Code 54956.95, Liability Claim, Workman Compensation, Claimant Leroy Henderson. Agency Claim Against Pasadena Area Community College. The third item is Government Code 54957B, Appointment, Employment Dismissal of a Public Employee, Academic Management One Position. Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to address the Board on any of these closed session items? If not, we will adjourn to closed session and will return at approximately. And there is one reportable item that we need to read. Okay, so, unassociate dean matter. In closed session, on motion of Trustee Wa and second by Trustee Tony Fellow, for Consent Item 62P, the Board voted to reassign the associate dean, non-credit division, to a position as instructor, ESL, as, as a first-year probationary faculty, effective January 11, 2016. This was a unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay, so now, we will proceed with our reorganizational meeting. And the first thing we will do.
Just a second.
What happened to the new members?
We're missing.
Where is our two members, missing in action?
Did they go home?
Yeah, I think they were just.
So glad to see them.
All right, we're late, we didn't quit yet.
I'm so glad you're back. Very good. Okay, so we're going to reconvene our annual organizational meeting, and at this point, we will go to the election of our Board Officers. And the first one will be that of the Board President. Do I have a nomination for Board President?
Before you do that, can I, could I raise a point of order on the, on this, on this agenda item?
Sure.
As a new member, and I've, I'm probably, this is shared by the other new member, we're confused about the, the election process. I know that there are various traditions in, in community colleges on how this is handled. Certainly, you can have an open vote on, on the officers, but I also understand that there's a rotation system. So, I'd love it if you could, if the Board members or the President could explain to me what the election process is that we're, that we're undertaking now.
So, what we do is, we get a nomination by one of our Board Members, and with four votes, we, whoever is nominated, is appointed.
Okay, but I also understand that there's a tradition of rotation, and I wondered how that, how that operates.
In the past, since I've been on the Board for five years, and it's like a sequence. When I first came on the Board, I think it was Trustee Fellow and I came on the Board, and there really isn't no written, written, I guess it's the norm of the Board, as in everything else. There are norms that we do in different, maybe we should use the word culture, I guess.
Right.
So, I was, we were, at that time, we were given a learning curve, a learning curve, meaning that we will get the opportunity to learn about the college, the college culture, where business is transacted, and we allow the senior members to do. So, we were there maybe for a year or two before we were given the opportunity to serve as a Board Member.
Right, I appreciate that, and I think that makes good sense. I guess my question is that, how is the rotation determined? Is it a seniority system, or how, how does it work out that we choose these officers by rotation? How do you fix the hierarchy or the seniority of it? And who's responsible for that?
I don't think there's any particular person that's responsible. Like I said, we get nomination from among each of us, and at that point, if you have four people that will support you, then that's how you get nominated.
Well, so, so then, my perception of it is that it's sort of a hybrid system, where we nominate candidates and decide who's the most qualified, or we have a rotation system that's based on seniority? I'm just not sure what the, what the protocol is, and how to vote in sense on this.
Okay, did you want to say something, John, since you're the most senior member here?
No.
So, I think we have a bit of a rotation system. I think when I came on the Board, I knew who was going to be, I didn't, I didn't become President for five years, four years?
Yes.
Because I, the other senior members were in line, and then we start bringing in the new Board Members. So, there's, there's a kind of a rotation system, so everybody can have an opportunity.
So, so how does that work?
We just described it.
Well, with all due respect, you, we've described that people get nominated and they get elected, but other people describe that there's a rotation we follow, so I'm confused, which is it?
By seniority.
So, how would that work? For example, Jim and I came in on at the same time, how do we figure the seniority in a case like that?
That is a very good question. When I came, I and Tony came at the same time, and as Tony's learning curve seemed to be, was more faster, because he was from school, from, so he, we decided between both of us who would go first, and he was the first one.
So, I don't think there's a definitive answer. To answer your question, and I'm only saying what I'm, I would be thinking at the moment, you came out at the same time, so I would say, okay, Jeanette was in the queue, the officer queue, so where was, where should Jeanette's replacement fall versus Bill's replacement? I would, in the case of a tie, side with, her seat was further up the queue than Bill's, because Bill had just served, so in maybe fairness, there's a little bit of a rotation in district and a rotation of people, so in fairness, in that case, my first reaction would be, and somebody could say something different and totally convince me, but my reaction would be, I'd just follow the queue as it was by district, not by person, in the case of that tie. So, that would be the answer to that specific question, but as far as where we are tonight with all the moving pieces that we have, it's back to what Jeanette said, that Walter's advice, you count to four, you know?
Yeah. Well, I, I'm not so concerned about personalities as I am about process. I know that the bylaws simply say that a majority of votes determines who the officers should be.
Let's go ahead.
But it seems to me there's pros and cons for both systems, and I'm not sure I understand how the hybrid system would work. There's certainly pros and cons for electing people who are the right person at the right time with the right skill set. There's also, I think, a real argument for the rotation system, because it gives district representation, there's predictability, but I think that when you're in a situation where you're in Netherland, either one, it really, it really sends a message that there isn't a process, that there isn't a, that there isn't a, really a regularized approach to the problem.
Well, I would say there is, there is a concept that we rotate, and as long as I've been on the Board, we have honored that concept that we are rotating. Now, you're asking for some definition as to how we pick those rotations, and I don't know how to answer, answer it when there's three or four moving variables underneath. I can tell you that usually, once we get the system rolling and people, if they get reelected, will usually follow seven years behind themselves in the queue with, you know, there are rare exceptions. So, in general, there's a process that we want to spread around fairly, like we want to take turns. Most people, by the time they get to this night and have served a year as President, are very glad to give the gavel away.
Yeah, indeed.
So, but when it gets down to the complications of, you know, do we split straws, flip a coin, Derringer's at ten paces, you know, we don't, we haven't really quite had to face that problem in, in your situation between the two of you, so.
Well, you know, that concerns me less than the process. I mean, I think that the openness, the transparency, I think it's a governance issue. You know, I understand that in, that last year, there was, you moved out of rotation for various reasons, and, you know, or was it two years ago? I don't know when this, when this occurred, but I, I do think that, I do think the community probably expects some, to have some understanding of how the process goes. Let me make a suggestion, which is that PUSD, I believe, faced this issue, because they had rotation issues, they had open election issues, and they addressed it in a bylaw. I'm not suggesting that we propose bylaws here and now, but I do think that it's important to have, to regularize and have predictability about this process, because this is, these are very important positions, obviously. And the other issue I was going to raise is, is, well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Linda.
No, no, go ahead, I'm just raising my hand so that she knows I'm going to speak.
Okay. The other issue is, is I think that it treads on Brown Act territory, when you have the, when you have the informality of rules here, either rotation or, or open election, and it's sort of decided informally, and I, to me, that treads kind of on the spirit of what the Brown Act is, which is that we have these open discussions, open election or predictable rotation. Otherwise, it's something that seems like we're, we're doing it in, behind closed doors.
Okay. Just, do you want?
So, just my general knowledge of other colleges, since I sit on the State Board, is that most colleges do follow the same process. So, there is a general rotation, but, and as Trustee Martin has said, explained that we, the purpose of that is to give everyone a chance to be in leadership, but also, the variables are, you know, how, how long have you been there, whether or not, so there is some seniority that's factored in, and it's also demonstration of your, of knowledge and ability to really handle a leadership position as a trustee. So, I would like to suggest, I do think it's, you know, we try to be collegial about this, and maybe that doesn't seem as transparent to you, but, but we vote, and, you know, I think that if you get four votes, you get four votes, and we're all going to honor that. I, I would suggest that this is, if we are wanting to change this process, this is probably not the time to do it, and we should do this in a retreat, which is coming up in January 16th.
Thank you.
Can I just say, you made a statement, I just wanted to correct. There's been really no break, and since I've been here and how we do this, nobody was taken out of my, out of rotation, whatever it is.
Okay, so, may we proceed then, with our election of Board Officers, beginning with the President? Do I have a nomination for Board President?
Mrs. President, I would like to enthusiastically nominate Trustee Linda Wa.
Whoa, all right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And we have a second by Trustee Fellow. Do we have advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, very good. Trustee Fellow, you'll be our next clerk.
Thank you.
And finally, we have our Board Secretary. Do we have a nomination?
The President is the Board, the President is the Board.
We want to nominate Dr. Verdi. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Trustee, who?
Martin.
Martin, okay, who was the first, did the nomination? Okay, so our nomination was Dr. Fellow, and seconded by Trustee Martin. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we're all done, welcome. So, at this point, it gives me great honor and joy to relinquish this, to miss Trustee Wa. Congratulations.
Are we naming a, a building after her?
A house, what are you talking about?
President Brown, December 9, 2015, Pasadena Area Community College District, Board of Trustees, commendation to you in gratitude for your service and leadership as Board President, 2014, 2015.
Thank you. Do I get a picture with Presidents? I've probably never seen one of these for a while. Thank you, thank you so very much, and I do want to say, I really appreciate all of you, you guys worked very hard. I will say that we had a lot of things that we accomplished this year, and I'm very proud of it. I love what I'm seeing happening on campus, and we have a brand-new President, we have, climate is looking good, we have, it's just wonderful, and I couldn't have done it without you, and thank you, and now, it's all yours.
Well, I just wanted to add that, you know, President Brown, I really appreciated your leadership, and certainly, last year was a year, as you said, of a lot of changes, and we accomplished a lot of things. We did that under your leadership, so I want to thank you for that, and I look forward to working with Dr. Selvage and Dr. Fellow as fellow Board Officers. Thank you. Okay, so, we are now at Item I, Introductions and Recognitions.
Yes, we have Ms. Olivia Bueno from the Georgia.
Whoa, we have unanimous votes here. Okay, congratulations. Okay, our next office would be that of clerk. Do we have a nomination? Nomination for?
I nominate.
Nominate Tony Fellow.
We have a nomination for Mr. Fellow, Dr. Fellow, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Wa. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, very good. Trustee Fellow, you'll be our next clerk.
Thank you.
And finally, we have our board secretary. Do we have a nomination?
The president is the board, the president is the board.
We want to nominate Dr. Verden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, trustee, who?
Martin.
Martin. Okay, who was the first, the nomination?
Our.
Okay, so our nomination was Dr. Fellow and seconded by trustee Martin. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're all done. Welcome. So, at this point, it gives me great honor and joy to relinquish this, to miss trustee Wa. Congratulations.
Are we naming a building after her?
A house, what are you talking about?
President Brown, December 9, 2015, Pasadena Area Community College District, Board of Trustees, commendation to you in gratitude for your service and leadership as board president, 2014, 2015.
Thank you. Do I get a picture with presidents? I've probably never seen one of these for a while. Thank you. Thank you so very much, and I do want to say, I really appreciate all of you. You guys worked very hard. I will say that we had a lot of things that we accomplished this year, and I'm very proud of it. I love what I'm seeing happening on campus, and we have a brand-new president, we have, climate is looking good, we have, it's just wonderful, and I couldn't have done it without you, and thank you. And now, it's all yours.
Well, I just wanted to add that, you know, President Brown, I really appreciated your leadership, and certainly, last year was a year, as you said, of a lot of changes, and we accomplished a lot of things. We did that under your leadership, so I want to thank you for that, and I look forward to working with Dr. Salvage and Dr. Fellow as fellow board officers.
Thank you. Okay, so, we are now at item I, introductions and recognitions.
Yes, we have Ms. Olivia Bueno from the Germania Culture Club, who would like to make
Good evening, newly-elected President Wa, board members, and President Verden. My name is Olivia Bueno, President of the Germania Culture Club. On behalf of our club, PCC's German-language students, and the German faculty, it is my privilege to present this award to the Pasadena City College Board of Trustees. This award of appreciation was given to us by the City of Alhambra for our interpreting work for the Special Olympic German delegation this past summer. Thank you, Dr. Robert Miller, for making our participation possible. Thank you, Dean Amy Omer, Dean Rebecca Cobb, and to the staff of the Office of Student Life for their support and guidance. Thank you to the Shadford Library for providing us with a place to hone our German skills and prepare, seven weeks prior to the Special Olympics. Thank you to Coach Monica Tandlinger for serving as our faculty chaperone for all the events. Thank you to Professor Lydia McDonald, who even after entering retirement this summer, joined us in interpreting for the German athletes. Lastly, we would like to express our gratitude for our PCC German program, educating us in the art of global friendship, cultural exchange, and international outreach. Let this award celebrate the far-reaching effects the Pasadena City College language programs can have in our community and abroad. This award belongs to all of us. Vielen Dank, thank you very much.
Very fitting on the day that Angela Merkel was named Person of the Year.
Oh, they did nominate her?
Yep.
That was my choice.
Well, congratulations to the German club, and thank you very much for this certificate. Okay, so while I'm switching positions here with Donald Trump, it's number three. Trustee Brown, okay. Is that all the introductions?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on to item J, certification of signatures.
I'm suspecting that orange envelope has something to do with that, right?
Yes.
Oh, I see. Is that it? Okay. Is that like the Grammy Awards?
We pass that around.
It is recommended that the Board of Trustees authorize the following individuals or positions to sign documents on behalf of the district, and we have to do that whenever we have an election of the board, so.
Motion to approve.
A second? So, a first by Dr. Fellow and a second by trustee Brown. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously passed, thank you. Okay, we have the setting day and time of regular meetings for 2016 and the retreats. So, have all, all board members had a chance to review the calendar? So, any questions, any changes? Okay.
I have one.
Okay.
No.
Trustee Brown?
Do you have the calendar?
Item K. Tap, tap.
Yeah, actually, I thought maybe, I noticed that we had our commencement date still in May, and I think that is incorrect, correct?
This is correct. It's going to change in 2017.
Oh, well, excuse me. Okay, all right, great.
Okay, so the calendar stands as noted. May I have an advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
How is that?
Calendar unanimously passes.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, item L, we have the Board of Trustees, committees, and representatives. So, I don't think we have a description of some of these committees, do we?
We have the descriptions in the folder, the folder that you received today.
Madam President, usually, if the board would like, we usually have, let the president have a week or so to look at these and talk to people who'd like to do it, and so you don't really have to do it today.
Thank you, Dr. Fellow. I was going to suggest, especially since we have two new trustees, so I'd like you to take a look at, at the descriptions of the committees, and feel free to call or ask any questions to any of the formerly-serving trustees. And yes, I would like to give everyone a week, and I'd like you to submit your top three choices for these committees, and then by our next board meeting, we will convene and have these regularly assigned. So, if that is amenable to everyone, any problems?
I think there's just one committee that is automatically yours, and that's measure P.
Okay, I accept assignment to measure P.
Yeah, we always do.
Okay, any, but any others, feel free to submit your, your preferences. Okay, so no action needed on that, and we'll take that up at the next board meeting. So, this is, oh, I guess we're adjourned, the annual organization meeting? So, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
I'm not a second.
So, motion made by Dr. Fellow, seconded by trustee Brown. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So, at this time, we will convene the regular business meeting of the Pasadena Area Community College Trustees. We will take public comment on non-agenda items. We have one speaker, Margaret Castro, on the EOPS. So, I want to remind you, it's three minutes. Will the clerk set the timer, or do you have the timer?
The clerk?
I got to watch.
Okay, so, three minutes, and the clerk will advise you one minute ahead.
Okay, thank you. On August 11, 2015, I received an unexpected phone call from the EOPS director, Hiba Griffins, over at Rio Hondo College. That is a college that I decided to start attending. And she was telling me that I was disqualified from the program over there, because she proceeded to discuss some of the issues that I've had here at Pasadena City College. What I realized at that time, that the only way that she was going to know about this, about these issues that I've had here at this college, was that if she had a conversation with the interim director right now, the current one, Nikki Dixon, and that was the only way she was going to know about any of the issues that I've ever had here. So, when, when I had this conversation with her, I decided to place a call to her, to Hiba Griffins' supervisor, to discuss this matter. And when I called, when I called and talked to him, he called me back and apologized for the misunderstanding, and asked that when I would like to come over there for orientation. So, you know, I gladly accepted it, and I, and I went to the orientation for the EOPS program at Rio Hondo. What I knew is that Hiba, Hiba and Nikki Dixon, they did work together here at PCC at one time, and I had found out that they are good friends. And what I never expected was to have this kind of personal information that was discussed to another college that I was going to attend. And this was not only a breach of confidential information, but this was very unprofessional on the part of Ms. Dixon to speak about without even my consent or even my knowledge of the items and issues that I've had here at this college. Two days after I received that call, and I attended the Rio Hondo orientation, you know, I was really happy. I was happy that I was going to a new college, happy to not have to deal with the issues that I've had here. But I decided to go and speak to Ms. Dixon and have an opportunity to discuss with her about this breach of confidentiality. So, when I went over there to her office and I had this meeting, she proceeded to yell and scream at me, and to tell me that she didn't know what I was talking about, and, and she just kept on going. You know, and I found this to be very unprofessional, especially since, you know, I had moved on, but I wanted to give her the opportunity to apologize to me for breaching confidentiality. She proceeded to tell me that I was no longer going to be in the program, and that I was being exited out, you know, and I wasn't about to sit there and, and continue to let somebody talk to me in this manner, especially somebody who's a professional, somebody who represents Pasadena City College and who is an interim director. This is not a way to address students. And so, I did file a complaint with the Human Resources Department, and to my knowledge, nothing has ever happened to her. Nothing's ever been discussed. Nothing has ever been done. I was directed to speak to her supervisor, Armando Duran, and I gave him the opportunity for her to apologize to me verbally. I never heard back. Nothing ever happened. So, I contacted your interim HR director, and I asked her what's going on. And she just said that Cynthia Levo and Armando Duran would take care of this. They were, it was left to that. You know, and for me, that's fine for somebody else, but I'm a student, and foremost, I'm a disabled and older returning student to a college. I don't feel.
Please bring your comments to an end.
Okay, I don't feel that this was really appropriate, and I do feel that, for me, as getting services, you know what, that's not really appropriate behavior for somebody who wants a job. And I do know that her position is up for hire, and I think it's inappropriate to treat students with disrespect. And I really do hope that that treatment doesn't happen to other students. Thank you.
Thank you. We only have one speaker? Okay, so we will move on to the approval of minutes for meeting number 24. May I have a, a motion to approve?
I move approval of the minutes.
Moved by trustee Brown, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Bunn. Any discussion? Any corrections? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Abstain.
So, two abstentions, trustee Osterlin, trustee Hilsman. Okay, so, motion passes. Okay, we have action items for approval, the receipt, so item R, receipt of fiscal year, oh, I'm sorry, approval of consent items. So, are there any the trustees want pulled for further discussion? Okay.
If not, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
And I'll second.
So, moved by Dr. Fellow, seconded by trustee Brown.
Just for the record, I think it's 62P was previously approved in closed session. The last one on our consent list is 62P, which, as we indicated when we came out of closed session, was approved in closed session.
You're correct, thank you.
And we have to vote on it again in public, in open session.
Okay, thank you, trustee Martin. So, may I have an advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, action items, so on to item R, receipt of fiscal year 2014-15, district financial audit, superintendent?
I'm going to ask Dr. Miller to introduce our guest.
Yes, so this evening, we have our team from Vicente Lloyd and Stutzman, Renee Graves and, and her colleague, Jessie. And we're going to ask Renee to report to the board tonight on our 2014 district financial audit. And after that, we will ask Dr. Salvage to speak on behalf of the board Subcommittee on Budget and Finance. Thank you, Renee.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so to begin, I'm going to talk just a little bit about the audit process, and we do meet with management and the audit subcommittee as we start the audit. We go through our planning documents with them and get their input as to how anything, you know, in particular, that they would like us to look at during the audit. Another part of this meeting is also to, you know, share with them what management's responsibilities are, as well as what our audit responsibilities are. The financial statements are management's, so the only parts that belong to us in the audit are our opinions. So, moving into the audit report itself, in regard to the opinion, we have rendered a clean or an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. What that means is that they are presented fairly by management, and they are following all the appropriate accounting principles. We had no adjustments to the audit for this year, so the numbers that you're seeing are derived initially from the 311 reports that you would see, both the 311 as well as the 311 Qs. There is one significant change in this report, I'm guessing that you have taken notice of this, and that is with.
Excuse me, President Wa, there's a image on the screen here, which was not supposed to come up until I was making my comments, so Renee is not referring to these numbers here as being in the audit.
Okay, so we should ignore the screen until Renee finishes talking and you get ready to, thank you.
Okay.
We can take the image down, too, please.
Okay. There was a significant new accounting principle that came into effect this year. You may know it by the, the name of Gatsby Statement Number 68, but what that statement did is it required that the district recognize the proportionate share of the pension liability for both the PERS program as well as the STIRS program. And this liability is fairly substantial for your proportionate share, the total is $93 million. It is, $67 million is related to STIRS, and then $25 million of that is related to PERS. There are some other entries that affect the accounting, there's a deferred inflow and a deferred outflow on the financial statements. So, the, the total accumulation of those entries resulted in an additional liability of $111 million. So, these financial statements reflect a net position of $52 million. Prior to the implementation of Gatsby 68, your ending balance, or your net position, would have been $163 million. So, that's the effect that it did have, it's quite substantial. One of the items that came up during the audit subcommittee, yes?
Excuse me, Renee, would you explain to the board and to the public at large that this is a, a requirement that all public entities have to abide by, and that our situation is not atypical or unusual that other institutions are dealing with, please?
Yes, and I had fun to make those comments, but we'll, we'll get there quicker. It is something that is affecting every district within the state, so you are not the only one that this had to record that, and also to record such a large liability. It is a reporting requirement, it is not a funding requirement, so it is something that's reported on the financial statements. Coming from an audit perspective, it doesn't cause us any concern that you will not be able to meet your current obligations. There are additional contributions that you will be making over the next number of years as they're ramping up the contribution to hopefully try to reduce that liability, but it is something that everyone, we're seeing on everyone's financial statements. Our discussions with, with various specialists are that it should not have any effect on things such as bond ratings, accreditation, anything of that nature, because again, every district has this very large liability on their financial statements. You may have noticed that your unrestricted ending balance is a negative number, it's a negative 90, 90 million on your financial statements. You are one of the more fortunate districts in that your total net position is not negative. We have a few clients that not only is their unrestricted net, negatives, their all, their total net position number is also a negative number. So, Dr. Miller, did that touch on the things that you wanted?
Yes, it did, and I just also would like to point out that we had a board memo that spoke to the report on the audit and financial statements, and sort of also goes, attempts to. to, in a more clearer way, indicate the highlights of this report and provide information that the board may find useful.
Thank you. Trustee Selvage?
If I could have the first slide up?
We're ready for the slideshow.
Yeah. Right. We had a very productive meeting with the auditors, the Audit and Budget Committee, and their staff was present as well. And as was indicated, we've got a clean audit. There were some minor adjustments and things noted that are being taken care of. None of them would affect the materiality of the financial statements and how they represent our financial position. So we're clean on that respect. When we go through this exercise of having the audit done and then going over the audit with the auditor, it's an opportunity to notice things that are different from the prior year. It's not formally a comparison of how the budget, which is the plan, compares with the but, the audit, which is what actually happened, but there are things that we note. I've repeated here a slide that you now see if you can read those numbers, which indicates some findings and impressions that I presented this very same slide in September when we approved the budget for this coming year. The objective of this slide was to indicate that in going over the 2015-16 budget, we also looked ahead, as we ought to, to be responsible fiscal planners, and we had to note that there are some very significant challenges which we're going to face over the next four or five years, depending on how a whole bunch of things turn out that we can't predict now. Some could turn to the, turn out better than we would like, some might not turn out as well. But I wanted to show back in September and take this opportunity, having touched on some of these in the audit process, to again emphasize that we've got some real challenges coming up. We have contributions to the pension plans, CalPERS and CalSTIRS, which are going to increase substantially. We've projected substantial increases in the cost of the medical plan benefits. And at the same time, we have very significant increases in those large line items. We also have a question mark on the Prop 30 revenue. We're currently getting $18 million from Prop 30, which was a voter-passed initiative which is going to expire in four more years. After four years, we're going to get zero money from that. It's revenue that goes to the state and then is distributed to education, kindergarten through 14 community colleges. It's made up of a sales tax component, excuse me, and a much larger income tax component. The income tax component is an income tax on very high incomes, and as such, it tends to be pretty variable compared to a lot of the revenue sources that the state has. We were fortunate this last year that it was higher than people had originally thought it might be. But in any case, if some initiatives that are being talked about now by people that want to put a similar measure on the ballot to essentially just replace or extend this type of arrangement, if those aren't successful, we're going to need to look to the state to backfill or other ways of generating revenues or economizing on expenses. But as you can see there, $18 million, that's a question mark compared to a operation that has $150 million approximately, a general fund for operations. That's a really big slice, so we need to really think carefully as we plan ahead over the next few years. So this is the second time I've given the pitch here, but I wanted to make sure that people were reminded of it. There's a second slide, which, if we can put the second slide up.
There you go.
Now, this slide shows two things. We spoke about the liability that the college has and is now, for the first time, showing on our financial statements in accordance with the new Government Accounting Standards Board requirements. The obligation to pay these is always out there. It's just now that we are finally putting it on the financial statements, and everybody, every other government agency is as well. To give you an idea of the potential impact of this, and the CalPERS and CalSTIRS are two line items that I just spoke about on the other chart, but if you look at the top of this table, the contribution that PCC makes every year for the CalSTIRS pension plan and the CalPERS pension plan is in the range of 8% for, or 9% for CalSTIRS and almost 12% for CalPERS. Now, by 2020 or '21, the CalSTIRS is expected to rise, and this is determined by, CalSTIRS is determined by state law, it's going to go up to something in the range of 19%. So from 9% to 19% of the payroll. So that's going to essentially double. The CalPERS contribution is going to go up from approximately 12% of payroll to 20% or so of payroll, and that's decided by the CalPERS Board.
Dr. Selvage, can I just interrupt with a quick question? Are these increases based on the current assumed reinvestment rate of 7.6?
Yes.
Or are they based on the new Jerry Brown upcoming 6.6%?
As you'll see, the source there is 310. That was March 10th, 2014, when these were, these were promulgated. Now, in the audit, the June 30th, 2015 audit, which is what we're talking about tonight, based on actuarial projections that were made as of that date, the CalSTIRS obligation liabilities were $67, $68 million. CalPERS was $25 million or so. We also have a retiree health benefit for which we have not yet funded $5.9 million or so. Now, those add up to about $99 million. And as we were just told, we had the $67 million and the $25 million on our financial statements for the very first time. And those numbers I just read are in the audit. Since the audit date, probably within the last month, I think, every, people who were watching the business sections might have noticed that the CalPERS Board was expected to lower the rate of return they expect to earn on their investments, which fund pensions. They expect to lower their rate of return from the rate that was used as of June 30th, which was 7.5%. People are expecting it to be reduced to about 6.5%. And the CalSTIRS would probably also reduce their expected earnings on their investments. And again, these earnings on these investments help fund the pensions, and they determine what those percentages will be in the top table. When you reduce the expected return on your investments to pay the pensions, what you do is you increase the liability that's going to have to be handled by, in this case, contributions by PCC in these years indicated. So you can see that the dollar value of this liability that we saw as $93 million is going to go up to almost $150 million. It's going to go up by over 50% in all likelihood. And those were numbers that were in the audit, just as a sort of a convenience and a way to have some context for the numbers and what might happen if it turns out the pension plans are going to earn more than they expected or if they're going to earn less. They've announced that they expect they're going to earn less. So what we're really going to see probably by the end of this fiscal year is something more in the range of not $99 million, but something probably in the range of $155 to $160 million. It'll be reflected on what we do here at PCC by the percentage contributions in these coming years being substantially higher than the numbers you see in that top table. So the percent of the payroll that we have to pay for CalSTIRS employees, the percent of the payroll we have to pay for CalPERS employees, which is already very substantial, we can expect that those are probably going to go up, and that's not good.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Selvage. Are there any questions from the trustees for Dr. Selvage or Dr. Miller? Trustee Martin?
Well, as a member of the committee, I would just make a couple of quick comments, if I may. I direct your attention to page 72. The United States government asks beneficiaries of federal grants to complete this one-page summary, and it's a little confusing to know what's a good answer and what's a bad answer in the yeses and nos. In general, all the answers are about the best answer you can get. It'd be nice to think that there's no significant identifiable material weaknesses, and there was, but short of that, every answer on the page was as good as it could get. I was actually pleasantly stunned to see that we are now considered a low-risk audit. So I think there's some kudos to the business people and especially the accounting people for some good, hard work to get that page as clean as it is. I'd like to report to the other trustees and to the public. Our audit meeting was a three-hour meeting, a little longer than you normally get. I think we were trying to be thorough. I think we had a good 20-plus minutes of that without any staff present, where the trustees talked in executive session with just the auditors and had an opportunity to ask some heartfelt questions there without staff present to ensure an independence in the report. So I just thought it would be helpful for you all to know that.
Thank you, Trustee Martin. Any other questions?
I'd just say thank you for the good news.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, so if I may, to piggyback on what John said, but to summarize for the public's good, the audit opinion is unmodified and it presents fairly in all material respects, as Renee said. The district is qualified as a low-risk auditee, which is, which is a very solid place to be. Both the unmodified opinion and the designation of a low-risk, low-risk auditee are the highest level of review that can be received in an audit opinion, and no recorded adjustments and no management letter comments. So that's a very, very good year. In addition to that, we had a total of four findings, two federal, two state, all very manageable, that we'll, that we'll be able to deal with this coming year. And then the status of previous year for 14-15 findings, we were able to resolve all of those matters. So I just wanted to echo what Trustee Martin said, and also I would like to give strong kudos to Diane Mandrufina and her staff for the great work. I want to thank Renee and Jessie and her team. We've been with you now for two years, I believe, and it's been, it's been a journey, but it's been a good journey, and I just wanted to extend our appreciation to you. They're a good auditor. They, they look under every rock, and that's a good thing. So we appreciate them very much.
Thank you.
So the action is to receive the audit as opposed to approve, just to receive it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, may I have a motion to receive this audit report?
Move or receive the audit.
I would second.
Moved by Trustee Selvage and seconded by Trustee Martin. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I just wanted to add my thanks to Dr. Selvage and the budget audit team, as well as to our auditors and to our business administration. Just excellent work. I was getting a little depressed listening to the bad report, the bad news from Dr. Selvage, but now I feel a little bit more lightened now that I hear that we're a low-risk audit.
Mrs. President, if I may make one more comment for the public's good. So it was an open meeting, open Brownach meeting, and as a member of the public, soon-to-be trustee, Trustee Osterling was present for the entire time with the exception of the executive session, which he obviously should not have been privy to. And so I appreciated him coming, and he came informed. He had read all the materials and had good questions, as if he'd been here a while. I don't know. So I think it'd just be nice for the public to know. He's obviously hit the ground running, and I thought did a nice job complimenting the committee.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Osterling. Okay, approval of additions, deletions, and changes to the credit and non-credit curriculum. Dr. Veridian?
Shall we bring to you a whole list of courses to be added, deleted, or some of them would be changes from credit and non-credit curriculum?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So moved by Trustee Fellow, seconded by Trustee Brown. Any discussion?
I do.
Trustee Martin?
So I'd like to express my appreciation to the staff because I have been one who asks for additional information, and now I'm getting drowned in additional information. And I'm feeling bad about it because you're doing such a good job of giving me so much information, and I'm trying to actually read it, you know, and get through it all. I think when I originally raised the question, my concern was more about the classes that were being deleted or archived, I guess is our nice polite word for that, and not so much about the new additions. And so I'm just one trustee, but to save some administrative time in the future, I don't need quite so much information about the additions as just knowing the deletions or archiving what's happening is more of the issue. So again, thank you for being so responsive, but for me and maybe others have a different feeling, you know, I'd rather just stay, save a few hours out there.
Thank you, Trustee Martin. Any other? Well, I'd like to make a comment. So I guess Trustee Martin is the Papa Bear, and I must be the Baby Bear because I think it's just right. I have to say, I really appreciate this information. So not only was I interested in why you were deleting, but I was also interested in why you were adding and how this brings us towards our goals. And as you know, having sat on the workforce development and we see a lot of support coming in from the governor's office through education and our partnership with industry, I think that this additional information certainly gives me confidence that the staff really knows where we're going, and they're articulating that to our students. Our students should have clear pathways where their, these classes will take them to their education and beyond. So I want to thank all of the staff for having done all of this work.
Trustee Martin and Trustee Watt, we just want you to know that it's a pleasure for us to provide this information because at the same time, it gives us, it gives administration an opportunity to take a global look of the programs that we have and why we are adding what we are adding. It's not that we just want to add a course because somebody wants to write a course. And when we're deleting it, it also gives us an opportunity to look at the programs we have and whether that deletion makes sense because it is being incorporated in a different program under a different course name. So we will continue providing you this information.
Thank you, and feel free to just skim over it, Trustee Martin, if it's too much.
I have a question. I noticed on some of these, it says transfer credit under review. On others, it's silent on the issue. It doesn't say anything one way or the other. And I just wondered, those where it says nothing, does that mean the transfer credit has already been?
The courses that we offer, if it says under review, it means that the University of California system or the CSU system are looking at it to make sure that it is, it matches their curriculum, because we will not be offering courses that cannot articulate with the UCs and the CSUs because then those would be units that our students would never be able to use. They won't be able to transfer them.
Understood, so, so-
Yeah, if it says under review, it means that we should be receiving the information very shortly from the UCs and the CSUs because before we get into that, we do check with them whether they will accept that or not, and we, our faculty work with them.
So when do these courses start?
They won't be starting until fall of next year.
Okay, so there's time to get that-
Oh, yeah, plenty of time for that, yes.
The transfer credit approved.
Yes, this is the root.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Trustee Selvage, who is it?
There is a comment.
Oh, Summer, I'm sorry. It's Summer, Summer. But we still plenty of time, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Call for advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have item T, approval of the 2015-16 Student Equity Plan. Dr. Veridian?
As you know, we receive funding from the state to bridge the achievement gap. The state has made it very clear that it is unacceptable that we have some groups that don't perform as well as other groups, that we have reference groups that are performing at a significantly high level and target groups that are not. So every year, we have to submit a plan on how we have spent that money and what we have, what plans we have in place to bridge that gap. have, what plans we have in place to bridge that gap. And the plan that is right now with you for approval has gone through the shared governance process of the college. Faculty and staff have worked together. They have gone through the faculty process. They've been approved by the academic senate, and now we bring it here to you for approval. And Dr. Cynthia Olivo, the associate vice president for student services, who leads this effort, is available to answer questions that you might have.
Dr. Olivo?
Good evening, board of trustees. I do want to ask for faculty, staff, and managers who are in the audience who have assisted with this plan to please stand and be recognized. Thank you for your help. We also have Will Sims from the city of Pasadena and Fernando Serano, who is a teacher here at Learning Works Charter School affiliated with Homeboys Industry, who are both our alumni, who have been hired to help us with the Minority Male Community College Collaborative. So welcome, these gentlemen, who've assisted me with this project. So I'm happy to be here before you today to present our Student Equity Plan for 2015-2016. As Dr. Verdiyan mentioned, the Student Equity Committee has worked in collaboration with the academic senate and the college council to bring forward to you a plan to spend our allocation of $1.9 million. The goal of Student Equity is to identify through a prescribed method from the chancellor's office where our achievement gaps exist and how we plan to close those achievement gaps. And that is what the plan before you describes today. I'm very confident that if we follow this plan, we will see a difference in our achievement for students at PCC. There are five success indicators. One is access to the college. The other is course completion, basic skills completion, and then for students to earn either an associate degree, a certificate, or to transfer.
So I had a question. First of all, I had a lovely conversation with you, Dr. Olivo, about this after I read the information in the packet. And one of the things that you indicated to me, which I thought was interesting, was that you had something of a mid-course correction during the process as a result of some directives from the chancellor's office. Can you explain what that is and how you feel that's an improvement, or is it an improvement?
Sure. The chancellor's office initially awarded each campus in the state with funding that needed to be spent by June 30th. And because the administrators, board members, were advocating that campuses be given additional time so that we could spend the money wisely, we were given an extension. So we have actually until December of next year in order to spend this allocation. And I think that will be extremely helpful. It gives us more time to implement more curriculum revisions and provide more professional learning for our faculty, staff, and managers so that we can implement new services for students.
Maybe I misunderstood in our conversation. I thought that you had said that the process had changed as a result of some of these directives. Am I incorrect or do I misunderstand?
Which process?
From the process of selecting the resources, where they would go?
Sure. So what I mentioned is, we ran a request-for-proposal process in the spring, and we had 23 groups on campus submit an RFP. We selected nine. The chancellor's office, after many of the campuses did an RFP process, said, you know, we think a better course of action is for committees to look at where achievement gaps exist and to be more intentional as a campus to address the achievement gaps and not necessarily make funding available for RFPs. Sometimes those RFPs become these disparate projects that aren't necessarily working together to address the gaps. And so that's the course of action that we're taking at PCC.
So the pros for that for you is it gives you more control over how you disperse the funds?
Correct.
Okay. And do you have, could you give a little bit of an idea of what the criteria are that you see that are the major issues, challenges that you're addressing with the grant?
Yes, I would say one of the biggest gaps would be in basic skills. So students entering at the basic skill level for, let's say, math, English, and ESL, it takes students a long time to move from the basic skills level to college level. And so I think we have ventured into some really effective partnerships with the math faculty. For example, we hosted a retreat with USC as the facilitator, Dr. Estella, Ben Simone and her team at the Center for Urban Education. They were the facilitators, and they provided us with some good direction on how we can implement course acceleration and potentially change the way we place students in basic skills courses. So it's, I'm looking forward to those kinds of innovations that we will be implementing at PCC.
Sounds great. I have one last question. Is it possible to use some of these funds in terms of deploying more counselors, or is that something that's outside the purview?
No, no. As the former dean of counseling, yes, I do believe in counseling and getting more counselors. I'm very pleased that this year, we will be, we went through the shared governance process, and we'll be hiring seven additional counselors. And that will be through a combination of student success and support program funds and district support. In the future, we can look at also using equity funds to provide additional counselors.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hilsman. Are there trustees? Do you have any other? Trustee Osterling?
Yes, I also thank you for your time to walk me through this report in advance of the meeting. And based on our conversation, the first paragraph of the executive summary was confusing, and it's my understanding we can eliminate that confusion by deleting the word "underrepresented."
Correct.
Okay. And then, secondly, on page seven, also in the executive summary, where the goals are listed, the four goals, we're going to identify what our starting point benchmarks are for those so that we know what the starting point is and we can see if we're achieving those goals. And lastly, on page, bear with me. You might remember, Dr. Olivos, what page was the other change that I requested?
It was to change the no gap for negative 32%. I believe that was the additional change.
That's on page 20, correct.
So these are the white residents of the Pasadena area community college district. When we ran the formula from the chancellor's office to identify which groups had achievement gaps in accessing PCC, one of the groups were white residents. And so the goal, of course, whenever there's a gap, is to have no gap. But in discussing this with trustee Osterling, you know, I do agree that perhaps there is not such an emphasis to place a lot of resources in closing that gap. In the report, I did say the institutional research office will be gathering more data to explain what the needs are for that population, but I agree that we do not have to have no gap by 2018 for that specific piece of data.
So on this report that we're going to submit, we're going to change the goal to be determined?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Osterling. Any other comments by the trustees? Trustee Salvage?
Yeah, starting on that same table that trustee Osterling started on, on page seven, where we have the 5% increase for enrollment, earning a degree, and transfer, and then a 2% retention. That's across the board for all students, or?
Those are goals that are specific to the targeted populations, trustee Salvage. So.
Are those different targeted populations for access, course completion, basic skills, or?
They are. Yes, for each success indicator, so there are five success indicators, and for each one, we use the percentage point gap calculation method to identify which student groups were the most impacted. And so, for example, with access, the target groups that were impacted were African-Americans, males, white, and unknown. But those groups vary per indicator, depending upon what the percentage point gap calculation revealed. So for the goals that you are referring to on page seven, where it says increase by 5%, that's for the specific targeted populations for each indicator.
And over what timeframe?
This would be in one year, a 5%.
Okay, one year. Okay, so not trying to close the whole gap, so that's 5% in the number, not five percentage points increase?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have another question, trustee Salvage?
Yeah, yeah, I've got notes in the.
How many more questions? You've got a lot, you said?
A couple of the points will require discussion.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. On the, oh, and by the way, when we voted on a plan back in early March, there were a couple of suggestions that I made. One had to do with the way we were looking at access.
Yes.
And the suggestion I had was that we look at the age, the ethnic breakdown by age cohort.
Yes.
And I don't think that was done here. You know, 70, I was looking at a, what is it, the report that was posted online for the college in August, which had all kinds of wonderful data. 72% of our students are 24 years or younger.
Yeah.
86 are under age 30. But if we look in at the table on page 19, which calculates the gap or the gain or loss, if we're using a target for representation in our student body that is for everybody who's over age 18, as it says here, we may well have a very different ethnic breakdown than if we look at the, say, under age 30, where we get 86% of our students. And if there are, as I am certain there are, you know, a lot more minorities in the under age 30 than from age 18 to 105 or whenever the last, you know, person checks out, we will be systematically underestimating the gap. So how can we fix that? And I suggested in March that we use, perhaps, if we're going to call the service area the district.
They are.
Okay. The people that did our redistricting, I can't remember the name of the company, they've got it right down to the census tract, not just zip code or city boundary, but they've got it down to the census tract. And I think we only split one or two when we did the redistricting. So, I mean, they could presumably get a ethnic breakdown, and you could weight it by 86% of the weight goes to people under age 30 and all, so that we get a outcome that doesn't underestimate the gap.
Sure. Yes, I discussed this with Crystal Colross in our research department, and she's been working with one of our geographic information system professors, and they're going to assist us with drilling down into the data, as you suggested. We were just unable to get to that by tonight, but we will work on it.
Okay. And then, as you flip over onto page 20, the gap that was giving the most funding here was the A1, and I guess this kind of touches on what trustee Osterling was bringing up in the conversation he had with you. We're not going to, we're going to put "to be determined" under the white, where it was down by 32%.
Right.
But when you drop down from the numbers that you generate in the chart to the bottom of page 20, where you say, okay, now here's how we're going to spend the money.
Yes.
There's a disconnect, and what are the factors that drove what the numbers that we see here? Because, you know, it really doesn't follow just from reading the numbers out of the table.
The most money that we spent was on the widest gap overall, which is course completion for face-to-face courses. So throughout the entire document, that's where the most money is spent. And the reason is because.
I was just speaking out the gap.
For access?
Yes, access.
Okay. In regards to access, the money that was allocated was based upon what the outreach department, for example, that's A1, what the outreach department could realistically achieve in a one-year timeframe. So we took the cost of additional college assistance and calculated their hours and what they could help us with, and that's how we came up with the dollar amount. In regards to the minority male community college consortia, that was an estimate based upon how much is needed to administer some survey instruments that are available through that group, as well as calculating the expenses for staff members to assist in administering those surveys.
But the $100,000 was, you were just talking about the $21,000. The $100,000 was determined?
For A1, it was determined based upon what the staff members could assist us with and how much money it would cost to pay them an hourly wage.
Okay. The other question is sort of a generic one, and it involves the approach that you used on the various indicators. When you presented the plan to us in March of last year, you were working off what I think is called the 80%
Correct.
Standard.
Yes.
And it says here that, on page 22, that there's proportionality, 80% rule, that was the one that was presented in March, and then now the percentage point gap. It says the percentage point gap is better, but when I was looking at the numbers in the table and looking at how you progress from the numbers on page 23, where you do, you just kind of turn the crank and you generate some percentage figures, and then you, let's see. Okay, and then on page 24, you come up with a number of students, as you indicate here, you can actually determine a number of students
Yes.
That generates that shortfall. But when you think about it, back on page 23, the goal that you established, in this case, it's 62%, the 62% is kind of depressed because that's influenced by the groups in there that are underachieving, and if you bring them up to the 62%, they're still substantially behind. It really doesn't close the gap, and I have the same concern that with the access approach, that we're systematically undercalculating what the gap is.
Yeah, so the chancellor, I'm glad that you noticed. Last year, the chancellor's office gave two methods to measure gaps. One was the proportionality index method, the other was the 80% rule. In September, they released a new method, which is the percentage point gap calculation. The benefit of the percentage point gap calculation is that you can actually identify how many students you need to help in each of the indicators so that you can close the gap. Now, we are not talking about raising success for all students. This is about bringing, for example, in one of the indicators, if we help 59 more African-American students to succeed in course completion, we will have met, we will have closed the achievement gap. Of course, we want to do better than that, and so that will be the next conversation. Once we close the gap, then how do we help all students succeed at an even higher rate? And I do believe that implementing the interventions I mentioned, like course acceleration, changing the way we place all students in basic skills classes, additional counseling services, that will, you know, the expression, "all boats rise," I think it will end up in more students succeeding at higher levels. But the most important thing is to bring equity so that all the students in these target populations begin to succeed at an equal rate as other students.
Well, I'll repeat, though, my concern that this method seems to systematically understate how many of those students. I agree that you can come up with a count when you turn the crank here and do these comparisons as percents and all that, but we're systematically understating the number of students, and that results in us not having a high enough goal.
Yeah.
An alternative.
I agree with having higher goals.
I know we're not going to change it tonight, but I would suggest that perhaps instead of having a goal to bring these people, or bring these categories up to this, in the case of page 23, 62%, bring them up to the level of the group that doesn't have a negative, which would mean going to 70%. I mean, let's, I mean, this is important, and we, and so let's set the goal as high as we should, as opposed to, I think, just systematically understating what the problem is.
Thank you, Dr. Salvage. Trustee Hilsman?
Yeah, I mean, I love data as much as the next person, but I wanted to know from you whether or not the you whether or not the additional effort to dig down in the data is going to change, essentially, your goal, because we're talking about students and their success.
Right.
That's part of the question. The other part of the question is, is there some mandate in, from the chancellor's office, in terms of this percentage gap that you need to worry about? I'm just concerned that you get sidetracked from what the job here is, which is to help, after all, help students and to maintain equity at the same time. But I'm wondering if digging down is going to distract you from that.
Yeah, we funded a half-time researcher through Student Equity, so I will ask that our researcher helps us with digging down deeper into the data while we're all doing the other work. But you're right, it's a huge task.
Eyes on the prize.
Yes, thank you.
No, I'm--
Good point.
My point is, I want to make sure we know what the prize is. It's this, it should be this level. I think we're understating what the prize ought to be. And I have a question.
But I would like you to know, Trustee Salvage, USC is the one that came up with the percentage point gap calculation, your alma mater, just so you know.
Well, if--
Obviously, I taught at UCLA, so that was the problem.
That's the source of our disagreement.
Trustee Salvage, you have one more question?
I have an area of inquiry. Is this--
Were these items that you were not able to submit to the staff ahead of time? Because normally, we try and submit this ahead of time, so that we don't have long, drawn-out discussions. Do you, can you wrap this up in five minutes?
It's a very important point.
Okay.
Okay? We're talking about spending $2 million on this effort over a year, $160,000 a month or something. That's a, it's a big chunk. Is this something that would be ongoing year after year after year at that level?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So it's something that isn't, that's just going to need a program, an approach going on and on and on?
It is a categorical program similar to EOP and S-CARE, CalWorks, and other categorical programs funded by the chancellor's office through the state legislature.
Okay, so we'll have special money for this each year?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Miller?
And then, the other question is, we've got, I think, 37 or something specific programs that you listed here.
Yes.
How do we know which ones are working better than others?
We, when the projects--
And which ones maybe in further years might need more of that money and some less?
Yes.
Or to shut one down and--
When the projects submitted their RFPs, we used a rubric that the Student Equity Committee designed, based upon national best practices. And three components of the rubric include scalability, an evaluation plan, and also an implementation plan. So we are going to be reviewing the success of these projects to determine which ones should be implemented for the long term, and that'll be based upon the data that tells us, these are the programs that are closing the gaps.
Dr. Miller?
So it should be remembered that the Student Equity and the Triple SP money is a result of the statewide student success initiative, and the Student Equity Plan is new. It's basically a one- to two-year-old initiative. The states, from every indication that we read and indicate, will be supporting this for many years to come. And the manner in which they measure success is an evolving, ongoing exercise that the chancellor's office, but more importantly, the field, is still trying to get its hands around. The end of the day, this is about closing that achievement gap. This is about more completions, more transfers, more degrees, and they're going to be counting those. That's what they're going to be counting. And they're going to be, in this particular case, from a Student Equity point of view, they're going to be looking at underrepresented populations. So I'm proud to say that our college is ahead of the curve in relation to many other districts, many of the community college districts and colleges, in terms of the head start that we've got and the effort that we're doing. And Dr. Levo, Dr. Klein, and others have amassed an incredible team of people to do this. So at least I'm very comfortable, from a financial point of view, that there is good stewardship, and we beefed up our research office. We had three people, and now we've got roughly six people, when you add the student with the additional soft monies that we've gotten. So we will be able to churn out meaningful data, but as Trustee Hilsman said, we want to keep our eyes on the prize, which is moving students forward, and then counting it in whatever appropriate way later.
Other trustee comments?
So I also just wanted to add that, having attended several workshops at the state level with chancellor's office on the equity program, I do agree with the comments that were made, and I really appreciate all the comments that have been made by all the trustees. I had a number myself, so I know Dr. Levo has really been taken to task to answer all of these. But as Dr. Miller said, this is an evolving process. It's a fairly new program. The chancellor's office is still reformulating it, as is our staff. So we do need to keep our eye on the ultimate goal, and that is student success. So thank you all, trustees, for your comment. May I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
I'd like to move for approval with the three changes that I requested. Second?
So the amendment from Trustee Osterling is to move for approval with all, with the, with three changes. So second from Trustee Hilsman, advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now on item U, Adoption of Memorandum of Understanding Between the Confidential's and Management Association Employees and the Pasadena Area Community College District Regarding Winter Holidays. President Verdiyan.
We're asking the board to approve the memorandum of understanding that will grant the three days in December, as confidential's and management will not have to take vacation days for those leaves, and they will be used as floating holidays to be taken before June 30th, 2016.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
So a move by Trustee Hilsman, and a second by Trustee Brown. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We are now on item V, List of 50 New Faculty Hires for 2016-17. Dr. Verdiyan.
Well, we gave you, now, we have a process at the college to prioritize faculty positions, and working with the faculty hiring prioritization committee, and working with the Office of Instruction, we have reached some kind of agreement on the 50 positions that the college will hire with a start date of fall 2016. And we have provided you the list for you to take a look at, so that you'll know what are the positions we are hiring.
Thank you, Dr. Verdiyan. Any questions for Dr. Verdiyan on this item? Thank you.
I do have a comment.
Trustee Brown.
So I am really proud to see this, 50 approved, I guess, faculty hired, and something very special happened to me today, as I was in a parking lot, and I thought I should comment on this. So one of the faculty, don't remember her name, came up to me and said, "Hey, I'm so-and-so, and I want to thank you for approving 50 new faculties." I said, "Oh, my gosh, someone really appreciates it." And not only that, she went on to comment, and the relationship that she has with our new superintendent, and how things are going so well on campus. So she wanted to thank the board for that. So I thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Okay. So now, any other comments by trustees? Okay, thank you for that information. Superintendent President's Report, Dr. Verdiyan.
Well, thank you, President Wa. I would like to start by congratulating you in your new position as president of the board. I also would like to congratulate Dr. Ross and Dr. Tony Fellow for your new positions on the board, and also welcome to Dr. Hilsman and to Dr. Osterling on your new appointment as trustees of the Pasadena Community College District. Members of the board and President Wa, you will notice that when we sent you your packet on Friday, we, you had a copy of Pasadena College Annual Report, and I want to assure you that we will have an annual report that will be given not only to you, but also to the community via an electronic link. And we've also shared it with all the community colleges of the state, because they make it a point of sharing their annual reports with us.
That's right.
And now, we can share our annual report with them. And we will also be sending those reports to the various school districts, cities, and high schools in the area, as well as chambers of commerce and business.
Is that report prepared entirely in-house? Is it prepared entirely in-house?
Everything is prepared in-house. Is that correct, Mr. Bucklehide? In-house, yes. And I would like to thank our new executive director of Strategic Communications for the work that he and his staff did to make sure that we met the deadline and turned this over to all of you before the end of November. I'd like to start by saying that as the tragedy in San Bernardino has once again raised the issue of safety in our community, I want to state one more time that at Pasadena City College, we have made safety one of our greatest concerns. We are working very closely with our campus police. Administration is working very closely with our faculty and our staff. Next week, we will have a tabletop exercise, where our chief of police will be meeting with all managers and supervisors and administrators as to what our collective responsibility is in the case of an emergency on campus. We want to be sure that we are prepared, and in the spring semester, we will have an active shooter drill on campus, and henceforth, every spring semester, we will have such a drill, just as every fall semester, we have the earthquake drill on campus. Last week, I had an opportunity to take some of our college staff to South Pasadena, so that we could share with them the work that we are doing at the college, and let them know that for a city such as South Pasadena, currently 2.6% of the total population of South Pasadena is here at Pasadena City College. And their high school sends us close to 700 students. Yesterday, Senator Carol Liu was at the Community Education Center, where she ran a workshop on foster youth, and at the same time, she recognized Pasadena City College for being one of the several centers statewide that had received state funding for our foster youth service programs. The grant of more than $200,000 for this year will help us build on the support we provide to this group of students. For the spring semester enrollment is under, well underway, and as of this morning, we were at about 82% capacity for our credit programs. And we are proud to say that our course offerings at John Muir High School are running also very close to capacity, and we are working very closely with the high school there to make sure that the seats that we have set aside for the high school are there, and that when school starts, the students will be there. The U.S. Department of Education released its college scorecard earlier this month, and I'm pleased to say that Pasadena City College ranks very high in graduation rate. We are at 49% graduation rate. Just keep that in mind, 49%, when you have a national level of 32.5% of graduation rate. And for the state of California, we rank in the top four colleges in the state of California. Very few colleges can boast that kind of graduation rate. The colleges in our area that are of the same size that you are, that we are, do not boast that kind of graduation rate. And our goal, as you saw today, you saw the presentation from Dr. Olivoe, who answered all the questions about student equity and what we are doing to bridge that gap, and we are confident that with the work that we are doing at Pasadena City College to bridge that gap, our graduation rate is going to go up. And our goal is not only to break the 50% graduation rate, but to be the number-one college in California with the highest graduation rate. And I know that some of our trustees would like to see us number one also in total transfers, and I have given the deans an assignment, that they have to increase the number of transfers in their division, just as they are going to be increasing the number of degrees awarded by 5% by division. Last week, we had two open forums on accreditation of the college. I must say that they were well-attended, and we have received a lot of information, and we have shared a lot of information on what we are doing. And I, we can never be too confident when it comes to accreditation, because it is a process where we are visited by our peers, who come to us, who look at what we're doing. And we know we are in probation, but with the help of our faculty and our staff, I think we have done a wonderful job addressing the recommendations. And I do believe that when the visiting team comes here, they are going to see that we have done a lot of progress. You have, many of you have pointed out that the climate on campus is very positive. Our faculty, our staff, our students seem to be very positive as the direction in which we are going. And again, you, our trustees, set a great example today, when you unanimously voted for a president, a vice president, and a clerk. And I think this is a strong message that Pasadena City College is sending to the world, that this college works as a team at all levels, at the instruction level, at the college level, and at the trustee leadership level. We are all on the same page, and I am confident that we will continue in that direction. The college had two wonderful scholarship functions. Last week, we had a special reception for the donors, who are also members of the president's circle, and yesterday, we honored our students. And I want to conclude by inviting all of you to come to our holiday party tomorrow. You'll see, we're gonna have a holiday tree in this very room, and the party will take place right here between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m., and you are all invited, and there will be a lot of door prizes. My understanding is that there will be at least 50 prizes that will be raffled away. So you could win something, so. I wish all of you happy holidays. I wish our faculty, our staff, our students, and I wish all our board members happy holidays, and we will see you here at our meeting in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Verdiyan. So now we'll call for other reports by management. Dr. Miller, any report?
No report tonight, thank you.
Dr. Bell? I'll go to Ms. Mitchell, classified Senate.
No reports for tonight.
Mr. Futner?
No report, but I would like to follow Dr. Verdiyan's comments and congratulate you on your presidency, and to our two new board members, congratulations and welcome. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
Trustee Martin?
Well, a quick comment of, we're supposed to, part of the certification, and in the past, we've all collectively signed this one page, but apparently, it's a little different this time. Just for clarity, while we're all here, you-- That's what I remember, and we're not listed, but I'm going to pass it back around. I see.
In the officer positions, I think, is what she's referring to.
Is it just the officers, or is it all trustee? Okay, so I'll sign, like, on the bottom, and we'll work it back around. But, okay, so I'm glad we got that straight while we're all here for certification. My one comment is to say my appreciation to now-former President Berlina Brown. For an incredible year, we're sitting here cozy with our new superintendent and enjoying the moment, but it was always not so. And it was, in some ways, every year seems to have its own unique challenges. I think you did an exceptional job leading the board, but what I really appreciate about what you did, Trustee Brown, was I appreciated the tone that you used to control the meeting. It seemed to me to be a perfect balance of both warmth and professionalism. I think you expressed to the college and the students that we are people, we represent the district, we're here for them on one side, and yet we kept a professional meeting moving. And I really appreciated that, and I think you did an incredible job, and just wanted to give you my appreciation.
Thank you.
Ditto. Okay, Dr. Fellow?
He beat me. I was going to say the same thing. I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Wa, and I wanted to-- I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Wa and, and wanted to thank Ms. Brown for her leadership, and I want to wish everyone a happy holidays.
Trustee Osterling?
I echo Dr. Fellow's. Congratulations to all the new officers and happy holidays to everybody.
Trustee Brown?
No comment.
Trustee Hilsman?
Yes, thank you for the comments and congratulations to the new officers. I'm honored to be here with you, and again, happy holidays to everybody.
Trustee Salvage?
Hardly anything more to say. Happy holidays.
Trustee Bunn, last but not least.
Yes, congratulations, trustee Wa, and welcome, trustee Osterling, Hilsman, and happy holidays. Thank you.
Okay, well, you know, I have to add a little bit. So I wanted to thank the trustees who came out to support the Asian Pacific Islanders Advisory Reception over at Rosemead, and I hope you all enjoyed it. It gave us a chance to have the API press and meet Director Buckelhide. I also want to thank PCC for loaning some performing arts students to the Laxta event, and they were very well-received. And I also want to thank the two students who came to the MTA, the two PCC students out of the 12 who came to MTA to testify for the universal student transit pass. So although it was not a non-agendized item, it is one that is still going forward to Mark Ridley Thomas, supervisor Ridley Thomas, and I want to thank Dean Cobb for all of her efforts in kind of getting everyone corralled and getting them out there, so that was really great. And then I want to let everyone know that San Marino High School won their football game, and they're going to have their CIF playoff here at PCC, so I hope everyone comes.
Who's the opponent?
Nice.
I don't know. Jim, I just know that they have a football... Okay, and I want to wish everyone happy holidays and thank you to staff and to all the administration. This meeting is now adjourned.
I'm sorry, you got one more item?
Oh, we don't, oh, we do. Oh, sorry. Wait, this isn't adjourned. Okay, we have proposed future board meeting dates. January 16th will be the spring retreat, and...
There's a small correction there, the time is, is not correct, so, yeah, so I think...
What time?
9:00 a.m.
Now, and is that a Friday or a Saturday?
That's a Saturday.
So the date is also wrong, I think.
The date is fine.
The date is fine? That date is fine?
Yeah, the 16th is a Saturday.
January 16th on Saturday will be the spring retreat.
And where does that take place?
We will let you...
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Verdiyan, were you working on a facilitator?
I am working on a facilitator, and hopefully, the facilitator will be here on January 15th, and we'll leave on the 16th of the evening or...
Okay, thank you. All right, so then our next board meeting is not, besides the retreat, will not be until January 20th? Is that correct? Okay. February 3rd and February 25th, so, 24th. So, and this is 2016, right, for both of those dates? Okay, great, we're not going back retroactively. Okay, so we don't need to approve those, everyone is already, okay, so no comments on that. So are there any proposed future agenda items from any of the trustees? Hopefully, I would like to bring up one. This is one that trustee Fellow had brought up when he was the president, and I hope that we will revisit the possibility of electronic board packages and perhaps get some cost-benefit analysis on what we're doing now. Okay, so if no future board items, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
All right, trustee Wa.